All right, so let's go ahead. We will start with general public comments. And Deborah? Deborah, are you here for general public comment?
I am. I am here for public comment. Hi, everybody. Thanks for everything you do. It was brought to my attention that there are some problems with the rental properties that are owned by Frank Piazza. And I'm concerned. I'm concerned for the tenants there, that the building isn't safe. I've been in touch with Dick Valentinetti, and he is terrific as the health officer. And I understand you guys got this letter or copied this letter.
Sent the one that Dick sent out.
That he sent. And so Frank apparently has until the 27th of this month, somewhere around there, to respond to some of these concerns. I understand that the property, that the house that he owns is now for sale. And it doesn't have... The term that was used was cistern. I looked it up. I'm thinking, is that septic? Is that drinking water? Whatever. There's an issue with the house that isn't going to be fixed before it's sold. I guess my concern is, I'm hoping that the select board is aware and on top of this, and that we, as a town, support improvements to the building, and however that can happen. And if Frank, if the owner, whoever it would be in this situation, isn't in compliance, that we're willing to move forward to take action to make sure it is. If the building comes into compliance with current health standards, with current safety standards. These are rental units in a time that rentals are... I don't have to tell you. I think we're under the call, right? These are people who are coming to Moretown. We want our town to be a town that is a welcoming place, that is a safe place, that is a place that people want to move to. We've been talking about that for years, too. And I think that our rental units being in compliance on all levels is indicative of the attitude of the town select board and the people. So I'm here to lend my support, to say that I will be back, because I want to know that whatever needs to be done to bring these buildings into compliance so that they are safe for rental units is being done and supported by the select board, and we're not dragging our feet on this, because it's not new news. Right? I mean, we all know. And so it's time, because there are grants out there. There is the will out there to bring rental units, to bring buildings into compliance. And this is the time. And this is the time for us as a town to say, yes, we support this, even more than after Irene. And I know it's difficult, because I dealt with that building during Irene and after Irene as only administrator. So I'm not saying this is easy stuff. This is our time. That's all. And I want to say, I support it. I support you. Dick Valentinetti has been great. I plan on staying informed on this and to lend my support and be there. That's what I wanted to say.
Are you talking about the house down there by Hill Road or the apartments?
I'm talking... Well, I'm talking about both. The apartments are... See, we don't want to talk about what really could happen with those apartments, because we don't want to put people out at this time when housing is so difficult. So how can we support the property owner in coming into compliance? And if there's not a will there to do it, what recourse do we have to make it happen? Because Moretown is an outstanding place to live and be. And that's what we want all of our buildings to show. That's what we're doing with the town hall, right? And the library. And we want to do it all the buildings in town.
Well said.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. And really, thank you guys for all that you do. I'll be back.
Thank you, Deborah.
I know Nicole was...
Yeah, but you should say from there.
I'm not saying you won't. I'm just saying, maybe no, that was just me calling.
Yes, you're up next. You're your next roll on up. And if you could state who you are.
Yes, my name is Nicole Malone, and I actually live in the building up there.
I'm sorry, Nicole, I didn't take last...
Malone.
Malone.
M-E-L-O-N-E. So I've been a resident for almost two years. I've been living at 1013. And I've been working almost this whole time to ensure that the buildings maintain, that our rent is going towards, you know, upkeeping our living situation. There are seven of us living there. All of us are facing near condemned conditions, where being retaliated against with threats of eviction, of intimidation, of, you know, nothing being done. I would just want to be part of this conversation. And I've been in touch with Dick, who's been wonderful, but also we've been dealing with this for over a year. I've spent a lot of time, you know, reaching out to Vermont Legal Aid, to want emergency rental assistance programs, and so on and so forth, but we're only so resourced to do these things on our own, especially when dealing with someone who will not communicate. You know, we've reached out to mediators and really trying to do what we can. We've tried to make our own repairs, yet we can't access funds to do so from the RAB, because he pretty much stands in the way. We aren't getting our rental rebates, because he denies renting to us. He's affected our credit score. He... I mean, people are getting injured. They're falling through porches. Our roofs are leaking. There's infestations. And I mean, the list goes on and on. So I just want to invite you to include me in this conversation. We've been doing a lot of work, trying to communicate and work on a mutually beneficial outcome, where, you know, the building is in good standing order, the tenants are doing their part, and the landlord is also doing his part. I think that's pretty much all. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. We've been keeping a pretty good record of what's going on there. But yeah, we all work in the town. We're teachers, we're librarians, we're, you know, postmen. So we really would like to stay here, because if the building becomes condemned, we're all out of home, and I don't know where we'll go.
Sure. We'd certainly like you to stay here.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks so much for your time.
And I really didn't know Nicole was coming to me.
I just had it last night. Thank you for having me.
So it's really right now in Frank's... Not Frank's, in our health inspector and also the town lawyer. I mean, it's of what we can do, so we pass it on to him, just to make sure, whatever we can do as a town, we are limited somewhat. Whatever we can do, we are willing to do to bring those places up to, you know, livable places that are reasonable to rent.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Gentlemen, well, we have... Actually, we have one more thing for you. And we're setting the tax rate, so it's not that fun. But we'll be right... Cheryl. Just make sure this is going on here. Let me get on. Okay, Cheryl?
So I emailed you all this tax rate last week. I'm not sure if you have a chance of looking at it or not. But there's a couple of different options that we can go with. If we go with standard document, we normally do it, tax increase will be 14 cents. If you decide that you want to use some arper funds for lost revenue, which is allowed, it will go to 0.50.
10 cents increase.
Yes, instead of 14.
My question, Cheryl, is the deficit that you are showing here is only from the end of the year last year. It does not require the budget overruns we've had already this year with increased throttle and fuel prices, right?
Correct.
So this... I think we're probably $30,000 over our budget now. I'm just stabbing it down. Let's say we're $30,000 over. I think it's almost... I almost feel like we should increase this $35,000 to cover the debt that we were already over this year.
I don't think legally you can do that.
You can't do that for one year?
No, I have... You can only put what was voted on by the voters.
Okay.
But you can't use arper funds for lost revenue. So at the end of the year, we're $30,000 over budget. You can use arper funds to...
Something to consider, we are...
Yep.
Okay. All right. That was my other question.
Cheryl, you're starting to announce it. I mean, it's such a new year.
I just wanted to point out that the major reasons for this was obviously the budget increase. Whole town was currently used. A lot of people pulled out this year, so the $60,000, that's about almost $15,000 difference. Those are really the two items that have put up the 14 cents. And the grandness value also did not grow up very much this year by that.
Which is kind of surprising.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
You get to determine what the place, the property is selling for.
Well, that won't... You won't see that changes until the reappraisal is done. We didn't have as many houses that were built this year, like when H&amp;H was building their houses over in Gallagher's. We had house after house line up. So that's why we saw the large increase in the previous years.
Right.
But this year, the building did not happen as well.
The other source of revenue that I've looked into, and I haven't got an answer back from Ron, is we have a part from the $135,000.
$135,000?
Yeah. I think I looked, but it was... Yeah.
Very good.
And that was, if you remember, we had the money that would put away for Vermont Power.
Oh, okay.
And there still hasn't been any action on that. So I've contacted Ron to see if at this point there's a statute or, because there hasn't been any return of any of the times we've tried to reach out, whether we can use that money. So that's just sitting there. So what I'm thinking is, we look at everything here tonight, and then, prior to making a decision on the tax rate, let me get an answer from Ron, and we can just meet through Zoom the next... By the end of the week, we'll put a cap on it, so that we can get this thing out. We'll give us a couple of days. Would you be all right with that, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Perhaps look for $131,000.
Just not Friday. Unless you want to do it without me, too.
No, we could do it Thursday. I think it'll be fairly quick. So why don't we go ahead and just continue to discuss what we want to do, but is that other possibility of that revenue as well?
The only thing that we have one on this Thursday would be in the morning, because we have a song at 8:00.
8:00.
So it's on the clock, 8:00 in the morning.
Yeah, maybe it's 7:45 would be the two-minute thing, where we just accept the...
That meeting is live here, all right? Yeah. 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 So it might be hard to zoom.
All right, well, it's live here. There's enough...
Yeah. Then we're all set.
Then we're all set.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. Take care.
Because I really hesitate to go out with, you know, I would sort of like to bring this tax rate down.
Yeah.
Get a little bit closer to where we were. I just want to see whether we can vote on the budget to decrease it. 1,210,000 to 1,366,000. Or it goes from 48 to 61. So we can also maybe vote on, but I would still like to hopefully get an answer on that before we make a final determination on the tax rate.
I do have comparisons from previous years, if you're interested in that or not. In 2018, it went down nine cents. So it kind of... That was a big drop. And in 2016, it was like a huge drop in there, too. So you can see where it's kind of going up and down.
It fluctuates with a number of different things. Whatever's up there, I think, really, what really drives it, it's not our municipal budget that's driving it at all. It's the school. And when there's... I mean, ours is going up, but where it's coming from, it's not the municipal rate.
Right.
It's...
Yeah, municipal rate very...
Very low. But it's the school that truly has a really, you know, say, at this point. But on our end, if we can add more revenue to it, we can help with that. But Cheryl, I do want to thank you. Sorry to put this together and have it all backed up where everything came from. Makes it easy to know. And certainly, when you have questions, this... How else would we get this out here next week? If you have questions, I'm certain, and you know where to keep them. So I suggest you keep this little packet, this shirt, together. And so we'll get together on Thursday. That's right. Don? John? Any questions for the two folks?
No.
We'll Zoom in on Thursday? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Yeah. I think a combination of both. Because a couple of people are going to be here anyways, and so we have to have... Someone has to be here. So we'll do both, you know, a combination. So that way, if you're at work, or, or if you're just in bed...
Yeah, I don't think I should say that. I think I need to make it down here.
All right. All right. So if you have any questions, you may head and move on.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Gentlemen, let's roll on up.
Thank you. Coming, I'm Tom Martin, I'm the chair of the board.
I'm Richard Hirschberg.
Charlie Streeter.
Don Wexler.
John Holigbo. Remember John, he's way out.
For those of you that don't know me, Sam Hill, Brett Meyer.
That's a bit of a staff sheet, basically of what we've done in the last three years, but obviously we hadn't had a contract. I just wanted to say, guys, there's something to look at here.
Is it one sheet?
Just one sheet, yeah.
This is just where you're cruising through the area?
Correct. As well as doing some highway safety details when we're in the area as well. So...
Sorry, gentlemen, just someone turned it on the line here. Can't look that often. Yep, she's... It's coming on while she's on there.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, gentlemen.
Okay. So we're hearing your request.
So, well, again, so this was something that, again, you've done, and I'm sorry, I got distracted there for a second, as you're going through town or just doing...
That is well, some highway safety details on the Benin area. Mount Halag, I think, part of it was obviously during COVID. As well, we lost a full-time patrolman back in August of 2020. We've actually hired one gentleman back on. Thank you. And just hired another gentleman back on, and now filling us back into... We're back to hopefully being able to do some things and boost up our patrol contracts in the area, so.
The hard part for us, as well as all other law enforcement, is when I came to the department 18 years ago, we had approximately 15 patrol deputies. And now we have about five. Hard to get people who want to do the work, the training to become a part-time certified or level two, which is called NOW, is super hard for everybody who has a full-time job. So it's really limited us on finding those reserve officers or deputy's that used to fill a lot of our patrols. So we have changed things up, where when I first started, our civil process guys didn't really do much of anything for patrol. And now our two civil process people fill in and do some patrol. We have the full-time deputy that does patrol. Brett, on his days off, does some patrol. Our other state deputy, on his days off, does some highway safety stuff, occasionally does some patrol. So we've got, you know, we've got two other part-timers that will fill in and do a little patrol now and then. So we're trying to piece it together as much as we can, try and get out with the contract times that we have, try and fill whatever needs to be can.
How many hours do you have now, bill, roughly?
A week? We might have...
It's for a week, right?
Four, maybe, a week. We might be able to do a...
Oh, I'm sorry. How many hours for you guys?
Right, yeah.
Anywhere from four to five hours a week. I may be able to, some weeks, do twice that amount, depending on, because what my intentions probably would be is that people that work in the valley, is either they would catch coming out, or catch coming back in, and we can kind of work it together and make it so it actually works out for one time. You may pay the mileage going out, but the next day you may not, depending on, which will help you guys in some ways. But as well, it kind of does a joint area as well. So it gives me the ability to schedule things a little bit better and organizing, like I said, by putting in either a place of war in area to start with, and just coming back into town on the way back through. It just makes it for a full day of patrol for them.
And nights, just, you know, nights and weekends are extremely hard, because we're so short-staffed, and we don't have the staff that's available to work the nights and weekends that, like we used to have.
Again, I have the full-time patrolman that I can work in to be able to do some of the weekend stuff. Again, generally what I would do, again, is work in the valley area. They'd probably come in from the valley, or vice versa, and be able to work some of that out as well.
But you need another... You need to hire another person.
We would like to. The problem is, is even, you know, we knew that with your new budget, or you voted in $20,000 for patrol, for 20... Even if you gave us the full $20,000, we couldn't hire a full-time deputy. So we currently, we run into the same problem that we have for the last 18 years, and we were just talking about it again, is during the summer, with road construction projects, we can fill for about eight months, but then what do we do with the other person for the other four months over the winter? So we've been trying really hard. Unfortunately, since we met with you last, which was many years ago, we even had to give up our court contracts, which provided several patrol people, part-time nights and weekends after they got done working in court, because we just couldn't staff it. Just didn't have the people. So we lost five positions that we had that were full-time positions in the court. And it's not, it's not just an usherschewitz.
It's all...
Law enforcement, dental, everybody's...
For one thing that we used to do as well, is some of the guys that worked full-time for other departments should come and work for us part-time. Those guys are working overtime, it's beyond, in their own departments, where to the point that they don't want to work for law enforcement anymore, period. It's getting to be... So it's giving really tough funding, help, period, to any of it.
So we just want to be really realistic with you of what the expectations are, that what we were able to provide. The other thing that we always like to do is we like, if you decide you want to contract with us, is people that are been here in the past know we like to have a contact person, so that if complaints come through, the one contact person gets in touch with them, and it would be Brett currently, to let them know, so we can organize the patrols for certain areas at certain times, or if you have a certain vehicle that you're dealing with, that you get a lot of complaints with. Because what has happened in the past, and we had it limited to one person, is we had you call us and say to go to this part of town, and you call us and say to go to this part of town, and we're pulling our hair out, because we're almost in the wrong place. Or we feel that things are going great, and next thing you know, I got John calling saying, I need you to come to our meeting. Get here, and we quit this. Boom, this is all that's happening. Well, if we know about it, or what's happening, we could deal with it.
Yeah.
Now, six months later, and we've dealt with it before, different contracts, but if we can just get a...
We need to have a communication place.
Yes.
I mean, that's the...
Yeah.
Either by email, or give me a phone call, whatever way, it works so well. And any information, the time of day it's happening, and what day of the week it's happening, works out very well. I don't want to schedule somebody at 7:00 in the morning when it's happening 5:00 at night.
Thanks. I think our best communication right now is with Warren, where Cindy will text me, or email me, I'm sorry, and say, hey, could you spend, you know, some time the next couple days on Main Street, because this is our problem, immediately. Sometimes it's that day, and we have a person out there, and we can just... I can email them or call them and say, hey, this is the current problem today, and we could take care of it. So we like the immediate response of what's going on, so we can try and deal with it immediately.
But through one person?
Yes. It gets so convoluted, we found, if it's not.
Yeah, I understand. And that's good to hear, that you're welcome to those type of calls, or communication and reactive...
I don't take it as whining or complaining. I take it as it's the information we need. Whether we want to deal with the issue that's happening for you guys, we don't want to just be out here... I won't say wasting money. Obviously, being here is exposure to the area, and they're seeing a cruiser, but I'd much rather be dealing with the actual issue.
And we were just having a conversation, myself and a couple of different people the last couple of days, over law enforcement gets a bad rap, because we don't solve enough crime, we're not in the right place at the right time. Well, nobody wants to be a witness, and nobody wants to talk to us about what's going on. So if we don't have that teamwork, that partnership, then we can't, we can't be really effective. So we encourage the partnership. Again, just to refresh, people that are new, or may have forgotten, the contracts that we take are primarily patrol contracts for motor vehicle patrol. We don't have the staffing, and we don't have the money to be able for us to come out and take your burglaries, take, you know, your retail thefts. We are a first responder if we're in the area. If the state police gets a call, and it's a serious call, we will definitely respond to be a force mauler, and quite often, we can be there first. If they're busy, we will handle things in your area until they can get here, or we can turn it over. But we do very well, working hand-in-hand with the state police to try and help cover everything as best as we all can, because we're all shorthanded.
As I suspect, that'll actually increase a little bit. The state police, very close to Berlin, they're going to additional response time now, so we're working on the valleys. Probably will be spending a fair amount of time in the area, being a first responder as well, so.
All right. So do you have a copy of your contracts?
Yeah, we talked about that. I've been on the mission for the last week. Came in, I've been playing catch-up all day. We were trying to catch up. At one time, we had to be here, and we'll have to bury it.
Okay.
And then we can look at it. I can't even tell you. I think the patrol weight is somewhere in the mid-30s plus mileage at this point.
Well, I think we're really interested in doing something. We spoke to Lieutenant White as well. They are so short-staffed, they can't afford to put anyone or do anything. So we'd certainly like to, you know, I think, do something. We have a little money in the budget. Like I said, it's not a lot, but we want to dip our toe in and see what happens with it, and what type of response we get. So if we get it, send that contract, and we can, we'll take a look at it. And I think, probably at our next meeting, we could approve something if we fill, and then, you know, let you know if we had any questions at that point. Either actually come in, or maybe jump on Zoom or something, and...
And our contracts have been pretty straightforward, pretty much probably is going to be the same as what you've seen before. For the most part, we have really good work for us, and they work for the communities. And again, we're here to try and be a partner with you. We can't be everything to everybody, but we try and help everybody we can.
Right. Now, we understand that. And what we're really going at this point, kind of to your belly width, is the motor vehicle stuff that's going on. A lot of speeding, whether it's through town... A lot of speeding, whether it's through town or Pony Farm or Common Road.
Same place, just
All the places. Mountain Road, Jonesburg, so.
Last one, I remember sixty-six and a thirty, everybody's highway environment on my way back in. About midnight, one night coming back through town.
Wow.
He, he was hammering, he actually was accelerating instead of slowing down.
Yeah, so that's a lot of that.
So, but, but in that, when we do some, something, right? It would still be better if we can sometimes be more specific about, you know, if you're going to give so many hours in a week, what we would want, you know, where we would want.
That's correct. So, so historically, for a multitude of reasons, we won't give you a schedule. The element of surprise for everybody is so much better because if you know, you might just say it, tell Fred, hey, you know, we've contacted the sheriff's department, they're going to be on Pony Farm Road this Thursday. So nothing happens when we're out there. So we show up, we do our thing, we bill you, the next week it's going to be on a different day, a different timeframe. Unless we hear from you that at eight-thirty in the morning, we're having a problem on Common Road. Okay, well, we were going to go to wherever else and we'll just redirect and we can do that.
Right, I think that's what we're looking for, we just want to be able to have that input if we're having, you know, we don't expect to micromanage you at all.
Again, I want to know, I want to know where the problems are, we can address those issues. Time of day it's happening, what time is it happening? If you've got vehicle descriptions, so we can deal with a single lot of vehicle, whether, whether people like to hear that or not. If I know it's Johnny Jones, I want to deal with Johnny Jones. I want to stop, I want to stop him, get him stopped from doing what it is because unfortunately, most of the time, I can remember meeting, coming, coming to a meeting here and location of park, et cetera, and all these vehicles are doing this. And I happen to be the guy that complained and told me where to park, but I got late getting home.
Yeah.
So that happens. But you know, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is I'm looking for that information. So I can address the issue when it's actually happening.
And we really haven't had the problem here in the past, but we have had in nearby communities where the select board would suggest that this person shouldn't be stopped or maybe we should take back this ticket because it's a brother of the family. And that's, that's not how we operate.
No.
Or sorry, in the color trap and say, I want you here during these hours for that, I want you getting my people. Sorry, but that was in neighboring town.
The other thing that we've had problems a couple of times is that our contract is fairly generic that we provide law enforcement services because if we, we have to do what we're doing and if we come onto something, we have to do the law enforcement services to deal with it. But I had one town very upset with me because one of the select board members on Saturday was reviewing all the upcoming contracts. Ours was on her kitchen table and she had someone call and say, I think a drunk driver just drove by my house. So she grabbed her contract, said, yeah, they handled that. Spent two hours trying to get in touch with somebody on Saturday, you're not going to get anybody. And then on Monday called me really mad that we didn't have anybody available. I said, well, number one, that's, we don't come out on a response like that because this is what it would look like. It's going to take us an hour to find a deputy if we can. They're going to have to drive to the office, get a cruiser, drive out here. So it's three hours after that drunk driver's gone by, call the state police. Let them know so that they can put it on a BOL so that everybody can be looking for that person so that we're all working together on it. And not waiting for us to have a contract with to try and make some miraculous drive. Because by the time those calls were made, where was that drunk driver? So it's not cost-effective for us to come out and drive around in circles looking for that.
And just to hit on some of the stuff like burglaries we were talking about, domestic abuse, those type of cases. First responders, yes. As far as the follow-up, the actual arrest and all that, just, just talk twenty thousand dollars. If I got to drive from here to go to say St. Albans or Newport to follow up and do an investigation, spend a half a day or a day up there, how much money did I just spend to yours that I could be doing patrol when that
Yep.
Should be a state police issue. So that's why we don't handle those type of things. I'm not saying if we don't get information, pass it on to state police. That happens very frequently, it's very common for us to come upon information and pass them on to different issues. We work very closely with the state police on those type of issues as well as very street crimes, work with them quite often. So we're involved in these different activities.
Because your problems are the same, people are causing problems in Barry and Marpilier and everywhere else. And, you know, these guys better than me know all the players, we transport a lot of players so they're able to put pieces together in contact, so.
I think, does anyone have any questions? I mean, what their role would be here? It's, it's a role of patrolling for, for traffic. And certainly if they saw something going on, they would step out or stop it. But they are not for acute problems that just happen like that there.
And as we, I'm not sure if we really hit on it. No different than if we're on patrol in the valley and something's happening here, we're going to be a first responder. If we're here and there's something happening in Wakefield, we're going to be a first responder to there. So maybe your day today and maybe Wakefield's day tomorrow, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, things could change. And, you know, you'll, now, we get a monthly report or we, how do you, or build on that?
He generally does, he
I usually do, usually because of the amount of hours, there's, there's not really enough to generate any interest.
Yep.
So normally I do a yearly report for your town report that will tell overall what we're doing and then all the stats from the year.
Or something, something in this form or something like that.
Is it a little Tell you all the numbers and, and everything.
I, I will say, if there's something where you go on and you want some stats filling, call at me.
Right, someone just called and asked a question, we can reach out.
Yeah, it's so much concerned, you know, we're not doing X, Y, and Z. You want to see your stats, you can easily provide the warnings, traffic stop warning, violations that we've written.
Criminal arrest, I'll add those on there. I mean, pretty simple to do this.
Yep, no problems, that's, that's good.
And just so you know, may or may not know, Brett and I are getting done the end of January. The, the guy that is running to replace me, that's on the pole, has worked for us for fourteen years, Mark Poohman. So the philosophy, I don't believe, is going to change at all come the first of the year.
I know his direction is more headed toward patrol. It's whether or not the dollar figure is going to allow for it. I'll be open on how, so we've talked quite a bit about it. He's in more of a direction and what Lamoyale County does and taking on the different patrol contracts and making them not full service, but more of a direction that way, but money may not be there.
I, I have followed in the footsteps of my predecessors that have always given, you are the lowest rate we charge.
Yep.
And every other sheriff's department charges a much higher rate and sometimes their highest rate because of the potential of what we can get into and to be able to hire the people and pay the benefits and everything. So we've always done patrol almost as a public service. So you're getting, you're getting the best deal from the sheriff's department.
And we're actually working on our dollar figures today, we're just over ninety thousand probably outfit, two cruisers this year. We only have, we don't have the price of the actual price for the cruiser yet. We're just trying to figure out where we're going to be and we're going to be about nine thousand plus this year outfit. And that's not through the camera system.
He would get them, it'll be two years in pretty
Unfortunately, two of the, well, not the newest ones, it'd be last year's newest ones are spending more time at Ford and Air at our office. So, you know, we have twenty thousand dollars in our budget.
Yes.
And you're, you're, there's no way you're going to obtain that amount. You have me, you must have a rough idea of what you go or amount you think you can do this year or ten or
Well, if we averaged, I apologize for not having the figure, but if we averaged five, five hours a week times thirty-five dollars an hour, and say we put fifteen dollars for mileage in that, so thirty-five times five is what? Five hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty-five plus, say fifteen or twenty for mileage. So that's, say a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty bucks a week times even ten weeks, that's eighteen hundred dollars. So we're not going to
We're going to come closer with that.
We're not going to come anywhere near close to it.
Depending on what happens with the new sheriff and what he's able to organize, would you be able to increase the budget? Maybe, don't make any promises. And we don't want to promise any, anything that we can't
And we may be able to do more and all the rest of it. We just don't want to promise you ten hours a week and only be able to like three. In some weeks, because of the way we, Brett does the schedule, I'm just saying a week because it's a global week.
Yep.
But
We work as a team.
There's some weeks to mix it up that you may get two patrols, one in the morning and one in the afternoon just to throw people off because they expect. You know, you don't want to expect that every Thursday afternoon, that's when the sheriffs are going to be out here. You know, you want a Monday afternoon, a Wednesday morning, a Friday afternoon, mix it up.
And I said, there is issues on the weekend by all means. We do have contracts, for example, Roxbury, they're big one is, is Sunday afternoon. I always live in the valley, headed back over the mountain. So I organize contracts, I organize the contracts so that the guys generally working in the valley bump over the hill and they'll work. The Roxbury contract ended out at the end of the day. So those are things that we do. So as you're thinking through the process, if that's an issue, if we end up with skiers again, unfortunately, that's been a real downfall, we're not seeing the traffic we used to see years ago. But here and there, if we start seeing that traffic again, you might see issues in the valley. I have issues here on a hundred E or on a hundred F.
As you know, lately, we've been getting the traffic at the beginning of the weekend and the, and the end of the weekend because they're all staying up on the hill. They're not coming down off, so.
And, and the Friday night traffic, we're not seeing it now.
And also Thursday night. Yeah, it's crazy on Thursday nights.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Can I just, one last, from going back to the top of the conversation, just would it, would it, in the, going into the future, you know, as you mentioned, twenty thousand for one town doesn't really, can't, doesn't hire one guy. But if all the valley towns said, pull together and pool their resources of money in their budgets, would that make any sense that it would maybe have the funds to bring another guy on?
We have talked about that and all that does at this point is, is shift a little bit because then some of the smaller contracts, we may not be able to fill as much. And we have, we have done several times, I've done for, that Moretown was involved years ago, Wakefield and Warren. We even had Stowe come in, another ski town, and the state police, and we all talked about staffs and we talked about numbers. And if you start thinking you want to get into something that's twenty-four seven and full-time patrol, dispatch alone is going to cost this community twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Coverage for manpower is going to be a million to a million and a quarter. So you're looking at easily a million five to cover Wakefield, Warren and Moretown for twenty-four seven coverage.
So with that said, right now, you talk about, what you are talking about, we have a joint contract with Wakefield and Warren. That is, both have sixteen hours, down to sixteen hours during the day, the other sixteen hours at night. And then Warren tosses in another for eight hours, just in Warren. So that's one of the larger contracts, there's been a lot of discussion about Facetown jumping on. Hasn't happened yet because they get free service by emergency response. Guess who's going, we're right there.
Right, you're right in town.
They have, they have not contracted with us yet, but that is one. There is discussion, it's back on, on the ball right now with Cabot, Marshfield and Plainfield, where they're going to do a joint contract in the future. That's looking so that, okay, it may be an eight-hour day, but it'd be an eight-hour day covering three towns.
Right.
So those things are headed, yeah, those things are headed that way. Whether or not that's something that you guys want to work with, with the town of Wakefield and Warren and do a joint with Facetown and come up with a dollar figure, that may be beneficial. As I think Wakefield now is twenty-five thousand, I think Warren's thirty-three, I'd have to look. But if you're looking at twenty to add into there, those figures may be getting more
Yeah, and it may not happen now. We do have a guy right now that might be interested in coming on, but we just can't support him. Full-time, he has a full-time job. But, you know, after the first of the year, things could change, the next month of the season, things could change for, for everybody.
As far as organizing, that's something that definitely affects with the towns because covering three towns instead of just two, it spreads it out a little bit, covers a lot of different areas. Okay, we've got a complaint going on now, we can deal with it, but we're also covering the other areas and it's, they see a cruiser in all three towns, not just two. That's just the way it works.
That, that really throws people when they'll see somebody at eight o'clock here, they think they're free. You have to go to Wakefield at ten or in Wakefield. Seven circle back around and eleven, we're back here.
I have one more question. So what is your feeling towards, how do you feel about the tolls, speed limit? Are they a waste of time, do you think, or you think the town should be investing in those?
We had, we had two when I got here and they were a huge money suck for us and we couldn't get them repaired. So we're going to get rid of them, Cabot bought one and they're using it. So what I will say is for us to own them, it was terrible. All the towns that had bought their own signs rave about them. Especially the ones that they can move around. Because it's just a, a good reminder, I mean, all of us drive on the road and how many times have you come onto a sign and went, oh, that's right, or seen a cruiser go by and go, oh, that's right. It's only thirty and I'm doing
I think a lot of names.
So data collecting, some are not. I don't know which ones you get, also some are MUC compliant, MUTCD compliant, some are not. Those that are not, you don't want. Because a sign has to flash at a certain rate. The speed rate of how fast it flashes is considered MUC compliant and the signs have to be MUC compliant to be
Do you have any information on that that you could share with us or sound?
Let me do some digging and I will see, I actually can send it, I can send it
Sasha, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be doing a little digging on that.
We don't have it anymore because it's work for us to have them. But all the towns that have them would really enjoy having them, it's really done
One thing that would be a benefit for us as well, and I'll just ask for it, not permanently, regional planning commission puts out the tapes on different roads, if you feel that there are problems with speed, I would highly suggest it. I, I actually, if you do, I would love to have those readings. Generally, they'll do it in two weeks in a given area. So it gives me time of day, speed, type of vehicle, the whole works, it gives me everything. So we do this quite often and Warren, they have their own tapes. Is if there's problems, they put out the tapes, gives me a time of day. I set up guys in those time, those times it's happening. Plainfield was not a big one that did it, it was miraculous. And when things were happening at noon time on such and such a day, or they're at noon time on such and such a day, guess who got caught? It worked, it worked very well. I think a hundred E would be great to know because you know who the people, actually, they know who the people are, but you're going to know that they're happening at this time of, time of the day it's happening.
So that's on the data collection?
Yes. They have the tapes, they do data collection, amount of vehicle, speed, time of day it's actually, and does the full graphs and everything for us. And I sit down and go through, why, I'm crazy, but I'm crazy with the numbers, I'll go through and I'll find when these are happening. And if we have the high rate of speeds, and we've got the guys running through here at seventy-five miles an hour every day at a certain time of day, guess who's going to be here?
On the flip side of that, it saves us from working in areas that really are a problem. Because, you know, I always use my dad as the, as the example, he lives on a thirty-five mile an hour dirt road. And it's a straightaway, and people will be going up and goes, that guy's flying, he's going forty. You know, it looks fast, damn near, he's going by the end of the driveway, but he's going forty. So we do get those complaints and this can alleviate some of those. So we're not spending a bunch of your time on a road where there's really not a problem.
I say, well, I can, I can just say, Route fourteen in Woodbury, yes, there's a lot of speed out by the lake. I've got non-stop complaints about the MBI trucks. We have yet to get an MBI truck speeding yet. But they're big trucks, they're loud, they bang on the roadway, everybody thinks they're flying because they're standing inside their house, everyone's flying.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what happens and it's perception and nothing wrong with that, it's perception, we go out, no issues.
That's good to hear.
Got a couple of business cards, both sheriff as well as mine, whichever way, if you have any questions, by all means, get ahold of us and we can direct, if you need us at the next meeting, just, just a little bit of lead time so that we are able to make it.
That's right. Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
And I'll, I'll keep sending you our contracts so you can look it over and then let us know.
Yeah.
By all means, any questions, a quick email and either get, either I get a holler sometime for in the office sometimes or not. I'll be back as soon as possible.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your time.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Yeah, congratulations on your retirement.
Well, that's planned, I'm running for assistant judge.
Oh, really?
Terrific.
You're just running, right?
Just running. Thirty-eight and a half years. I see it really says in the battery, a half year, just ready for something else.
Yeah, I bet. All right, so we have the library, Friends in the Library.
Hello.
Hi. How are you?
How are you?
But somebody's missed.
That's it, Story Walk Board. Um, I don't know if any of you have met Lisa, Lisa Gelsit is a member of the Friends of the Library.
Hello, yeah. Are you here in the library as well, or no?
I am, but the trustees.
Oh, the trustees, okay, the next.
I think I'm the meeting next or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alice, I thought you were.
Um, are you all familiar with the Story Walk concept?
Yes.
Yes.
And we got, just one moment for Don, you have a little. Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay. So the Friends of the Library would like to do a project to support Cory. We do supplemental work for the library, and she has asked for a permanent Story Walk. So we have been working on this, and we're here to get your blessing. Carla Lewis, who's also a member of the Friends, has spoken to the Warren Library and Fletcher Free in researching different companies that make Story Walk permanent installations. We've decided to go with a company called Barking Dog, and this is their product. So it would be mounted on a post at an angle, and we put two pages of the story in each one of the signs. And then it can be swapped out there, screws that you unscrew, and that way it is, the story is protected from weather and elements of that. So we have spoken to the school, the school actually has given us some financial support. But we have solicited input from the school, Friends of ECO, the Moretown PTO, I've walked a loop with the school librarian. And we've also worked with the rec committee, who has talked to Stephon. So we've talked about safety issues, we've talked about what route we want, and location with regard to making it easy to mow around them, and snow removal.
Accessibility.
Yep. So we've come up with a route, and we just wanted to present it to you, and hear any feedback or questions you have. I've also been working with the zoning administrator, who said that she believes we're exempt from needing a permit for the project.
You bet her on her first weeks are probably a good.
She was very thorough, she had a lot of questions. So I printed out a couple maps, I didn't do one for everyone because my poor little printer, I think it had a lot of junk. But the route we've discussed was going along.
It was upside down here.
Along the path here. Around, yep. Not exactly behind the school, this.
Can you move your model down? No, your, that was right in the way.
This path actually is really, it's the paved access road, and we thought there might be issues with future maintenance, and it was pretty slippery when we walked it. So we were thinking along the nature trail here, set off to the side, up around the tennis courts, and ending at the willow tree, we're looking at putting in twenty signs.
And they're gonna be mounted on?
We would do wood posts, and I assume we would set them in concrete. So let's say permanent, we need permanent.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
I mean, so the stories change every week.
Yeah, so our library could use it, the school librarian is really enthusiastic about it. They did a big water project, and we thought that they could use it for a tie-in to that. We thought that maybe the mad birders might wanna use it for the birding by ear that they do in the spring. You could do bike safety week, the historical society could do something with it. So we'd open it up to a lot of different groups in the valley.
When they talk to the signs, is there other displays or things around the sign that are related to the story that?
Typically not, so we would have a welcome board kind of explaining the Story Walk. And then you have laminated sheets. So you take a picture book apart, Cadillac Hubbard is actually the founder of Story Walk, and they have a lot that they loan out. So you get laminated individual sheets of a picture book. And so we could put them, one picture here and one picture here, and then you read the story and you walk around. Kids would walk around, you know, if they're older, on their own, but typically with, for little kids, with a caregiver who reads the story as you go along.
So these are set down long enough for children to read?
Yes. They are typically mounted at an angle, I was actually thinking about this the other day. We have to vary the height depending on where the path is, so they're mounted at a forty-five degree angle.
Okay, okay.
This is glass on the end?
Plex, it's plex, yeah. We do art displays.
Well, now that holds up to the weather and stuff.
Yep, it's, it's meant to hold up to the weather. We haven't heard of any issues with them in terms of maintenance. Fletcher Free had some, Phoebe and I think they, Carla said they have one damaged, do you remember? And the company took care of it right away, but it's meant to be waterproof. We actually looked into getting someone to make them, and he thought that, given the, the quality and, you know, how substantial this is, that he couldn't really match it.
I'm just thinking, five years down the road, it's, you know, these are, no one's using it, what do we do?
Use them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, how are we gonna be assured that these things are gonna be maintained and used to their full extent?
I mean, we could come up with sort of a maintenance plan, but we do a story, Cory does a Story Walk around Morfests every year, she does a few a year. I know the school does them, like, if there's an open house for the forest program, or at the beginning of the school year. So I'm thinking, right there, it's probably five or six times a year that they're already getting used. And if we have it permanent and are encouraging other groups to use it, you know, I think, I think it's gonna get used. It's, it's a really popular concept.
How long does a story usually stay up, a month or something, or a couple of weeks?
It varies.
Yeah, like actually, the Story Walk's like for April's Poetry Month, so for the whole month of April, there's a Poetry Walk. So I would think once a month would be the target, right down.
Yeah. My only concern would be like what Tom said, that, that, you know, five years, the signs start getting worn out, what do we, you know, what do we do? I mean, sure, the company, you know, you know what I mean, it just gets beat from the weather.
Right.
It'd be interesting to hear from this company, what, what, what help, what they've found with, and how long, you know, the longevity of going through, you know, from a winter, you know, it's freezing, it's snow, raining, sun, you know, all that.
So I know Warren just installed theirs, but we could talk to the Fletcher Free Library and to the company and find out what their suggestion is. But the Friends could also talk about what it looks like to replace the top plexiglass as it gets, you know, like cloudy or scratched or something. And, and make that part of our onward conversation and budgeting.
They also have some kind of cleaner that will buff out.
Oh, okay.
Plexiglass. Yeah, because I know we use it on the side-by-side every now and then, there's a certain thing, and it just puts a, it cleans it off enough that it's not so cloudy, so you get a little bit more out of it. Now, is this also like on the path where they do ECO? Kind of in like the same general area?
No, um, no, it, it's along the biking path.
Okay.
We talked about doing it up in the woods, and that presented some challenges in terms of both accessibility and safety. You don't want someone to come down and crash into one of the. And we talked, I actually ran into Jenny Lyle when I was walking around with the school librarian Nancy, and, you know, talked to her about bringing the public up to her base camp, and she was all for it. But as I said, this, this room presented some challenges in terms of, Chris from rec thought that it might need to be maintained at some point, and I walked on it on a pretty wet day, and it was really slippery, so we all, when we met with the rec committee to do a walk-around, all agreed that a flatter path was probably the better choice.
I was just thinking like for longevity, like another way to, to loop it in. But if the school is willing to use it, and the librarian's all for it, I mean, she can work with the library, and, you know, they have something going on for a month, bring case out during library time, or incorporate it into ECO time.
Yeah. Did you hear from the rec committee about this?
No.
Okay, well, we thought that they were gonna reach out to you, their notes from their last meeting at the end of June indicate that they fully support it. It said that they worked through details with Stephon and are supportive. They did say they may need to widen the trail in spots to just remove some small trees and do some limbing. But the goal would be that we wouldn't wanna do substantial changes to the trail. There's one issue of concern around the back corner of the tennis court, where the, the land kind of slopes down and how slippery that might be in the winter. So they may install a handrail, but that seemed like the most major of the maintenance issues.
So what's the next step? We give you our blessing, and you go forward with this, or what are you, what are you looking for?
We would love your approval, and then we're gonna place the order for the signs, and we, it's a little bit ambitious, but we'd love to have it installed before Morfests, so that we can have a Story Walk up for Morfests. I know in the past, we've had complaints about the stakes in the grounds once it gets dark. And so we've, the library has made an effort over the last couple of years to pull them up before dusk. But this would be out of the way of all the, and still something that people could enjoy during Morfests. So we need to get, you know, installation materials and some volunteer labor to bring out the agar and pour the cement and all that, or the concrete and all that, so.
So at this point, you're not looking for any reimbursement from the town for this?
No, the Friends are independent, funded on C three, so we supplement the funding that the library gets from the town.
This is still putting any funds up through as well?
They did, they supported one side, yeah.
Well, I don't know, why don't we go ahead and sort of make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we go ahead with the Story Book Project.
Second.
Kelly, any further discussions, all in favor, or aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you, thank you guys, it's great, I can't wait to do it.
Good idea.
Right.
And you do that Story Walk up in Man River, which is always fun to see.
Oh, yeah.
They, you used to have something like it at Greatest Gaze. If you look around there, there's like the old, original pieces of it, with the songs, the story pages. If you look closely, it's there.
Allison?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hey, Allison, how you doing?
Hi, good, thanks for having me. Ready?
Yep.
So I am acting as the, or serving as the treasurer for the library trustees right now. And the trustees have been discussing some creative ways to try to keep our assistant librarian. I mean, she's, she's here and she's not going anywhere maybe, but we would really like to give her a little bit of a raise. And we know that the budget is already set for this year. And we can discuss a way when the time comes, but we have some money in our donations that we wanted to kind of supplement a little raise for her. It's a, an amount of four hundred and seventy, excuse me, seventy-two dollars and some change. And it comes right out of a library donation, so it wouldn't be any cost to the town or anything. And I brought it up to Cheryl Lynn to see if that was possible, and she said that we would need to talk about it, so. I wanted to present that as something that we would like to do, and see if anyone has any objections or thoughts.
No, it's, it's her money, and you feel she deserves it?
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Why don't we get a motion on that, because of moving money around and stuff?
Oh, okay, I think a motion that, to support the use of funds from the library trustees to help support the assistant library.
Second.
Thank you, Kelly, I'll, any further discussion, pardon me, all in favor, or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Real quick.
We're just clicking through it.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Nice to meet you Jennifer.
I am. First off, good evening, and I hope you've had a lovely rainy day.
We have. Be nice to them.
Yeah.
I just wanna be home, be a bit.
Yes, really good.
Rivers really low, it's, that's a great. I'm here tonight, I am the current HOA vice president, or sorry, president, actually, I just took over from vice president for Gallagher Acres. Our community was established starting in about two thousand and ten, the new development, and in two thousand and twenty, we finished, we are all done building, all roads are in. Nate Hayward was our builder, and he turned over the property, so to speak, to all of us in the community to take over frighteningly, because we're trying to figure all of that out. And so what we've been doing is, up until this point, there are technically three to four roads in our community. Two are town-owned and town-maintained, and two, which used to just be one, but now I guess we've changed one of the names to Gallagher Acres Extension, are both private roads. And the roads are, at this point, pretty comparable, but they cost us as community members, as you might imagine, to maintain. We've done some work to look into how to make sure that they are up to the same standard as the road below. And so I have some information that I've collected over the last couple of weeks of doing this. I have a petition, I walked around every house in the community, not just the, so the, the way the community works, and I can show you on a map, the way that it looks is the lower, and I have one for each of you, I'm sorry. The lower road, and the middle road, which is actually literally named the middle road, are the town-run roads. And the upper loop actually has as many houses on it as the two lower roads. So it's actually got as much traffic, if not more, than the lower two roads. And if you look in the packet that I made, there's actually a V-Trans map, and I think it's actually the same one that's on our wall right there, or very similar. But the latest one on V-Trans doesn't go past two thousand and sixteen. It doesn't, our road up top doesn't exist in V-Trans. And so one of the things that we would like, the entire community, as I walked around, every single person in every single house said we'd love to see if the town would be willing to adopt the upper road as part of the community because it would help us as a community, the whole group, feel like a united community, but also be part of Moretown as we really feel we are. They have a lot of support in the select board, they have a lot of support in believing in what you guys can do and valuing us, and we value you. And they really do trust that when we were told by Nate, as he handed the reins over to all of us, all we had to do was ask, all we had to do was come and, you know, propose and let you know what was going on. Now that our community is finally finished, there's no more building, that was kind of what he said. When the community is done, that's when you come and make your proposal. So I'm here with that in mind. One of the things that you might say is, we don't wanna take on any more roads right now, and I get that. You're already maintaining the two lower roads, they are graded and, well, I don't know all the technical terms. They're done, everything's done in the summer at least twice, and then in the winter. They're done, everything's done in the summer at least twice, and then in the winter, they're plowed. And it's helpful for our children who are walking to go down to the bus stop. So our kids all walk from the upper road to down to the bus stop and they're walking in the snow until it gets plowed by an outside company. We have outside companies who have to come and maintain it. As you might imagine, it's hard for us to find outside companies who are capable of doing the work. In two thousand and nineteen, we actually had the road upgraded. Island excavating came in, put down the requisite amount of layers that were required. I have a, actually a, an invoice for what they did for us. And they were able to change, they made sure that the culverts were up to, up to snuff, so to speak. They made sure that they put in the right materials, they used stay mat, they used gravel, they used sand, they used all of the stuff that they were supposed to use. And that was done in two thousand and nineteen in September. Since then, we've had two companies come in to try to help with the potholes and maintain. But as you might imagine, one of the things that's tricky is unfortunately, some companies who maintain both in the summer and the winter might kind of ruin your road a little bit in the winter and then have to then fix it for you, which has been a little predatory for us. And so that's a hard process for us as community members who are trying to figure this out. The stories are, you know, bankers or teachers or, we don't know what we're doing. And so that's been really tricky. And so the other thing that I know might be a concern is the width of the road. So I did a lot, I actually went out with measurements to do my own measuring, to figure out what the difference is between the two roads. And I measured the middle and lower road and both are at about seventeen feet wide, standard across. The upper road is not, it is fifty, no, sorry, seventeen at its widest and twelve at its narrowest. And so when I walked around with my petition, one of the things that I asked people is, would you be okay with it being a one-way road? If that were something that the town needed to do to make sure that it was feasible. Every single member, every single member in every single house said heck yes. Because they want their children to feel safe, they want to feel, to have their children be able to ride their bikes. They want to let them walk without feeling like the cars might be in the way or they may get hurt. And so one of the things we're seeing is a lot of our community members are struggling with maintenance on their cars because as the road starts to degrade, we have to try to maintain it two to three times a year. So I understand this may be a longer process than I'm asking for right now, but I wanted to at least bring it to your attention and see what could possibly be done, what steps there might, might need to be done. If you need to come out and survey the road, check the road, let me know what needs to be done, kinds of things. That's, I, I think that's what I'm hoping for at this point. Because I, as I walked around to my community members with the petition, every single person came to the door with a big smile on their face saying, absolutely yes, please, thank you so much for doing this. We have so much trust in the select board and we really hope that they can help us in this.
I'm glad that they're glad of trustees, historically, historically, we've never done this.
Well, I know in your town plan, it says in two thousand and fifteen, that you have the right to decide what to do. And the road is, because it was built after the main part of the community was done, it wasn't, it was considered a private road. But it is nearly, I mean, I, I walk that road five miles every single night. I, I do a figure eight loop five times. And it is, the road is no different than either, either part of it. The only difference, and I will admit, is the width. And we've investigated whether or not it would need to be widened. Widening would be difficult because of the way the culvert system has been set up with the drainage pitches, which is why I'm suggesting a one-way road. It would also really alleviate that need for our kids and that safety risk for our kids. And we have a lot of, we have a lot of concerns, all of which go to Moretown schools, all of which love the community. Who we, and we, we really are very supportive of this community. Every single person, nearly every single person in the petition even said, and I have the petition split, by the way. Everyone was like, we know that there's a sidewalk study going on, we would love that too. But you know, every, you can read, there's, there are forty-nine signatures on here from forty-two different houses, which sounds funny when I say that. Every single house I walked to said, absolutely, so.
No, we're really, very pleased to have the expansion of Gallagher Acres because it's helped keep our school.
I, I was actually part of that. I, I was actually very heavily involved in that process when, when that was all happening. I used to run the SOS meetings.
Okay, that's right.
Yes.
Well, as John mentioned, this is something we haven't done in the past, but that does conclude us from doing it in the future. I think this is something that we need to kind of digest a little bit.
Absolutely.
Meet with our road commission. And try to figure out what, you know, what's, what's it going to cost us to do this and how does it fit in? As John mentioned, you're a valuable, valuable part of the community. I mean, you are on the other side of town, but still a valuable part of our community and we need to take care of you folks as well. And certainly that, when we were doing the tax rate earlier and we were discussing the rent list and how, you know, years ago, we saw the dip when, when you guys started building. Because, not that, the difference taxes because the rent list was going up.
Yeah.
So we appreciate that, so I see the value here. So I want to take a look at what you have, appreciate your time and give this, you know, ample discussion. And I'm sure we'll be getting together more than once in the future to, to talk this over, see how this might work or if it doesn't. But.
You're only, you're only talking the upper road, not this, not that branch that goes up there.
So this branch might be the trickier, trickier part, and I do, I do recognize that.
This is a couple of houses up there.
There's four technically, and it is very much, it's much narrower than the other road. This road is widest from here all the way past my house here, this is the narrow spot right there. And it dip, it does dip in, not that it couldn't be widened there, but again, the one way would preclude that, it wouldn't even be necessary.
I was just asking about that, it's like a driveway.
Yeah, it, it does sort of, it has a good turnaround, actually. It's, it's, and that, and that actually, what's interesting is this road could be widened much easier because it has common land associated with it rather than corporate. So that's actually much more possible to widen than the, the upper road is, but yes.
As it is now with, and you guys are paying, does the whole place here split the cost for the?
The whole community does not, only the upper road does.
Only the upper road?
It, it, for our HOA fees, what we do is it's parsed out by several different things. We parse out our septic system, we parse out, because there's five of those. So each house is given a particular cost based on where we live. So where I live on the upper route, I have the most expensive septic and the most expensive road, which is fine, but, but that's just the way it sugarized, so.
So those people are next down, yeah.
So the cul-de-sac also pay for their, their portion of the road. And that comes out because it can all be done at the same time. So if you consider that it's about twenty houses, all twenty houses split that cost as part of, of our HOA fees. And I just got, I just got an estimate for costs right now just to get pothole repaired, so.
It's expensive enough.
It was, we had somebody in the past that was more expensive than somebody I was able to find this time, but it's still, it's going to cost us a pretty penny. And, and then we plow it as well, so, and that's a contract that we do. And that's tricky because the person that we use isn't great about coming out before students go to school. So our kids are walking sometimes in, you know, ankle to knee deep snow down to the, to the school bus. And that's, you know, I've got the oldest kids in our neighborhood, one who's a senior, and then they go down, it's going to the seventh grade. And they're walking down through that, so.
My, my main concern is, first of all, I, I'd love to see us be able to take that over. But my main concern is that the specs would have to be followed.
Yep.
Because the other roads are grandfathered.
Right.
And I don't know anything about one-way, I don't.
I don't know if the state will allow it. This is standard for the last three roads, which we get funding from the state to help maintain.
I know, yeah.
It sounds like to get to that, to get to that standard from where you're at, it's going to cost the community a significant amount of money.
I did a lot of research to try to find the standards. I know that the culvert systems that we have do meet the standard. They're all eighteen inches to twenty-four inch diameter, that's the first thing. I know that the last piece of research, and I, I found it, and then, it's one of those lovely things about Google, I lost it. There was a nice table someplace that explained the width requirements based on the speed limit. And so the speed limit in our roads is all fifteen, it's below the twenty-five mile an hour threshold. And so what it said was that as long as it's below that twenty-five threshold, it's a seven foot wide lane with, with no shoulder, was what it said. So technically, at twelve feet, it's a one-way. At fifteen feet, it's actually a two-way. I don't love it as a two-way, but we can handle it as a two-way, so.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and look and see whether, just really look into it and see if it's feasible?
And that's all I'm asking for, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to let my, my community know, like, they're willing to look into this. And it's hard for me to walk back and say, no. They're going to be much happier when I can say, they're at least willing to look into this and, and see what can be done. I mean, they blow, blow this out, I mean, yes, of course, but, but a no would probably be hard.
Yeah, no, I think we're all would like to do it, but we need to, there's a lot of, a lot of things we need to look at. If it can be possible, great, and if it can't, we will have given it, if it, sure.
I very much appreciate your time, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, the sidewalk is.
Oh, I'm excited about sidewalk, we're all, and we're excited, we love walking, and so that's a.
Yeah, we will walk right into town.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Someone, I don't know.
Yeah, let's keep all that together for Sasha. Or at least one copy over, but Sasha. All right, you know what, we have a couple of minutes, we're just going on to reports and communications. Let's see if there's anyone else, I don't Denise went on later, sushi head, and she wanted to talk about. Denise, did you have any public comment?
Uh, no, I, oops, I did not have any public comment, I was just listening in. Could you clarify something with the Gallagher Acres discussion? Why they're, why they are requesting that the town take over all of the maintenance? I didn't quite catch that.
Well, I can't speak for them, but I think they're just wanting to basically hand that road over, bring it up to town specs and hand it over.
Okay, so they want the town to incur the cost of doing that?
No.
No. But it would be, they're asking for a class three highway.
Yes.
So that we would take over the future maintenance of it.
Yes, okay, okay.
That's something where we'll look into and see if it is possible and then what the specs for a class three and what it would cost them to bring it up to that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't quite, okay, now, now I understand, sorry, I missed that first section. Trying to understand why they were requesting it. But it sounds like they want a, a better graded, better conditioned road. And then the town would request that they, may, and then, I'm sorry, they would request that the town maintain it at a class three. Okay, so they're basically trying, so they're basically trying to change the type of road it currently is in order to get the town to maintain it.
That would be the correct assessment, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And no other questions or, or comments on that?
Okay, I don't know, I just want to make sure you are.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, so let's go ahead, um, reports, Ms. Sasha, what do you have for us?
Ray got the RFP up to me and I got those out to all the companies for the River Road repaving. And that was Darlene on the website on the last week, and she's getting with JD and JD's some information so that she can understand now what's been going on.
Okay.
So that started.
Good.
I also wanted to ask about, you guys were in a discussion last talk for Karen, for the zoning administrator.
First I've heard of that.
So she could use them for all work.
All right, so, um, did we discuss that or?
It was kind of a touchstone subject when she was here.
Oh, when she was here?
Yeah, I thought, I think she mentioned something like that, I don't know if it committed to.
Yeah.
Sorry?
That's all right, that's why I was there.
I, I believe she did say something about having hours both here and remote.
Yes.
Where are we in our budget stuff or something like that?
I can find out.
Yeah. And we have one, we have a step on user for that, I think it was on administrator. Probably have access to something like that, especially if we're, and if they're doing off-site work, which we are proving, you know, encouraging. I would rather have it on my own device than someone else's.
Yeah, I think that was bigger.
So, yeah, why don't you talk a little bit about that and see what the thoughts are as well, it should be, and she may have an idea as well.
And we're pretty much decided, this is way outdated than anything, right?
Probably this thing here, yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. That could be part of it too, was I don't think we've had our computer, any computer updated yet, except for the one that's at home. So that could be a different computer.
Right, well, talk to the money, see, make sure all our systems are up to date.
Yeah.
It's, that's it?
Yep.
Should see the picture of Sasha this weekend. Oh, yeah, it was in the, what was that, you were on a water slide or something down Cheryl Lynn's? I don't know.
Joe's grandkids had a, he started, actually went down the water slide about fifty times.
We digress, but Randy, what you got for us?
A couple of things, so Joe is in the process of doing the monument repair work out here. Not going as quite as fast as I thought, but he's prepared the board concrete tomorrow and get the monumental set and then it'll be cleaned and now be done. I've talked to a former pines owner about the sidewalk repair. What they'd like to do is have, or send a check to the town and have the town pay for it. They'll reimburse the town or they'll pay the town first, whatever. So I just spoke to Joe there, the town has agreed to do the prep work.
Yeah.
I've asked Joe to get a price, see what it is, and, you know, try to go for the right price. I, I don't think anybody had a problem with that.
Just because as long as it gets done.
It doesn't cross the town, I mean.
Right.
So that's what else I'm working on.
Thank you.
And I did that RFP and that's when we did the first meeting in the office.
All right, any idea if that will happen this year?
There were indications that some, some contractors are agreeing, are going to be aggressive about it.
Really?
Yeah, surprising.
Yeah, this is for the waste system.
No, this is a River Road of vice.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You've been busy, Ray, thank you very much. Kelly? You've been moving out of town, I was still wondering if you had time to do anything here. All right, Big Dom at the end.
Well, so this is reports and communications, Ken, or do I do all new business or all?
No, new reports and communications, I know we were going to talk about the, you want to talk about the town hall later as far as the management or something like that?
Yeah, well, that and a little update about the RFP and stuff, so I can wait till all business.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, in that genre, we could talk about transportation stuff too. Want to do that one now as well?
Sure.
So this is the permit application for moving the RSFS, which is the, that's not radar, sorry.
The blading line.
So, well, no, the radar.
For the blading, yeah.
So I had hoped that I'd have some of it filled out tonight, a rough draft for everybody to look at, but I'm sorry, I got a little busy and didn't do it. But I also thought that I would go talk to Mark too about it, just to give him a heads up since he might, you know, be involved and we have to get this special bracket and stuff like that. But I mean, for my first go-through, I think I, I've not seen that we'll be responsible for the amending our permit. I'm not seeing that we'll have a fee to, you know, I think the only cost we're going to really have is buying this new bracket and, you know, the concrete and the excavator. concrete and the excavation. And so, that's where we are with that, and then, uh, you know, uh, John and I met, and I'll get some meeting out of this week, uh, we, we're still, we're working on some, you know, getting some of these signs, there's supposedly four more somewhere, putting those up on some, picking some roads that we're gonna put those up on, if anybody has any suggestions, you know, we'll do that, and John is gonna get with Ray, I don't know, maybe when you see him at the meeting Thursday or something, to talk about whether we do this temporary crosswalk up on the store post office, you know, what that would be involved, 'cause we did get a little, a drawing from the state that sort of incorporates what you have, what we have for the sidewalk project, and what we could do temporarily, so we've got that sort of in the, in the mode, and, um, and then, just, you know, whether we going forward, not, you know, we'll go ahead with relocating the RF, RSFS, or whether we do something as the folks did over on Route Two and do, um, a speed study on both sides of our village, similar to what they did at Waitsville, where they dropped the speed limits coming into their villages, and whether, you know, in that email that I forwarded you all this reference to that, um, so that's just something out there on the horizon. And that was about it, right, I think?
Yeah, yeah, that pretty much covered it.
Yep. That's the whole report. So hopefully, uh, when I see you next time, we'll have the permit ready to go, so we can relocate this, this summer or fall.
Sounds good.
It'll be nice.
Good job.
Okay, so I, uh, attended the Friends of the Bad River, um, meeting on climate change, and which, they're all gonna be on Tuesday night, let's just have it our slipper meeting is on Tuesday.
We missed you, John, brother.
Yeah. But it doesn't sound like I missed too much.
No, you didn't, we were here.
Yeah, that was a quick meeting.
But this is the, actually, it was the Gunn Dig Institute, um, at UVM, uh, presented the latest climate, uh, assessment, and, uh, interestingly, my daughter was actually involved in the first climate assessment, assessment, uh, as a fellow of the Gunn, uh, for her master's, uh, degree, and, um, so she was the lead student writer on the first one, which was, uh, in twenty-fourteen, and that's the one that the whole federal climate assessment is based on, Vermont was the leader on that, you know, like we are in so many, so many areas. But anyway, so, uh, Ann and I, uh, attended that meeting, and going forward, they're gonna have, um, there's another one, August fifth, I believe, um, and so, what we're doing is basically expanding the Bridge to River, the company, uh, you know, climate change, and, and, you know, related to the valley, so it's, it's a good, good future for tackling all of that. I'd really like to get the, uh, the road round tables up, up again.
With the road cruises, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't had one in a long time, um, but I think now that we're expanding the road bridge to river, so that we're gonna have more than just town officials involved, um, hopefully, things will, uh, you know, expand, we can do some more of those things.
Does anyone know if we had, um, to go along with that, I, I know they were just talking about the grants that were given from, um, it had to do with climate change, and the towns participating, we get any of that this year? Do you know of anything like that, where we did the ditch work in the past? Yeah.
For the small roads, yes.
Yeah, as well, yeah, I, there was good heard on that, uh, Mont Digger, and I was just curious as to whether we had received the funding, too. And that would go around, you're around.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Good. Anything else, John, or?
Um, no, I guess that's, that's it.
All right, well, my child, right before I came, I, uh, had a gentleman, uh, in fact, he has an appointment at our next Slupboard meeting, I think you, you can cancel, Lee Rogers?
Okay.
Um, a gentleman called me, he was buying some land that's landlocked on Cobb Hill, and the, the lawyer told him that we could give him a, uh, a right way to it. Um, so, I sent him straight on that, um, and there isn't a law on the books that there is, there's timber that's valuable that needs to be extracted, and you can't be away from yours to agree on it, that the Slupboard can step in and give a temporary easement. So I said, that would be an extreme case, that's all English law would, so I said there would be no way of giving out easements to, uh, to people, um, although I would like, Appleby finds a way, um, to make this work, he's a really nice gentleman, wanted to build a home, but, um, we don't give out easements. So, um, now let's go ahead and approve, uh, approve the minutes, we have July fifth. Is there a motion on that?
I'd like to motion to approve the minutes on July fifth.
Thank you, Red.
Second.
Thank you very much. And is there any further discussion? On the paper, hold on.
All right. All right.
Kelly, any business force? No. Ray, did you?
Yep.
John, or, um, Don?
Um, nothing new.
Nothing new, all right, so let's, nor do I. Sasha, do you have anything that needs to be brought up, man? All right, so, why don't we go with all business, and I know, Don, you have some stuff you wanna share, so let's start with you tonight.
Okay, uh, well, I was hoping that, uh, maybe on eight-one, on the next meeting, that we could, um, review and discuss the management plan that has been rough draft for the town hall, that we handed out to you, to everybody a couple of weeks ago. Maybe if people could take a, uh, chance to, to read it and go through it, and we could spend some time, you know, just kind of getting the select board's input, you know, it's like, it's just a rough draft, and to share some thoughts of how going forward, uh, the town hall could be managed, so.
Put that on the, uh, on the agenda?
Yeah, and I think, you know, there'd be some, maybe some folks from the town hall committee would like to join, you know, you know, we've gotten inputs from the town hall committee, the trustees, and the friends, and from Cheryl and and Sasha have looked at it, and, you know, now you, now the board and, and.
Sure, so, so.
So if that's convened on the agenda, and then, and let me know the time, I can let some people know. Uh, and then, so, the other thing, the, some, a good piece of news is we received two, uh, uh, proposals, uh, you know, for the, uh, architectural services, schematic design for the town hall. All right, uh, so I just got them, what, on Friday? And so, now what I'm gonna do before we have a meeting with the select board on, on the two proposals, is I'm gonna go with the two other, three other folks, and do this evaluation process, where someone doesn't look at the cost yet, you know, of what the proposals are, but this goes through, and you have a great weighting grading system, and we'll all go through that, and then, you know, once we do that, we can, um, then present it to the board, that, you know, the, so that again would be kind of shooting for an eight-one date, because in the RFP, we've actually outlined a whole schedule, so that, um, this can be worked on, and get to a point that we're at a place, come town meeting, where, you know, we'll come January, when we have to get something to be on them, we'll have information that we can present at town meeting, so there is a little bit of a clock ticking. So to that point, I guess, I, the request that I have to make is, and, and I won't divulge, 'cause I know what the two proposals are, but I could say that somewhere around five percent, if we could somehow, um, delegate five percent of the opera funds, it's the only place I can think of how we could fund this piece of work for the town hall, um, to, to, that would be a way to, to go forward, to be able to hire this firm to do the schematics, and, you know, it's a whole, it's not just, you know, there's gonna be meetings, and they meet with the community, and they, they, we outlined, if you're familiar with the RFP, there's all these steps they're gonna do about community outreach, getting some different ideas from, you know, taking what we've already done, and then coming in, presenting it to the board, you know, meeting with the select board in the library, and, you know, trustees, and then also the town, anyways, I won't go through the whole thing, but there's dates, something in the fall, so that, again, so that we get to that point, so.
So that's twenty-five thousand, roughly, is that?
Yeah, that's, would be a ballpark, 'cause, you know, somewhere around there, but, I mean, we're really at that point now, that, you know, the, uh, the rough, you know, it's, the rubber hits the road, I mean, if we're really gonna say, this is our beautiful town hall, and we gotta do something about it and fix it up, this is, this is really the next step, I mean, and in that proposal, it also, it, you know, takes, it looks in the water mitigation problem, the site drainage, and, you know, there's, there's a whole package of items, and, and it can maybe end up being that it's, you know, it is a community building with the library, or we might all pick, decide to pick a menu where it's just fixing the town hall, you know, but there's, there's things that have to be done, for sure. So, other than, I don't know where else, we talked about it at our last meeting, there's not like really, I don't, that's the, I know those funds would be available, but it's for that purpose of infrastructure, and, uh, if, if we can't see our, see to doing that, then it's just gonna kick the can down the road, you know, until, you know, next year, when we would maybe put stuff in the budget to do a schematic, and, you know, so anyways, that's the spiel for tonight. But it's good that we got two proposals, and, uh, they're both quite interesting, you know, quite, you know, they're both good.
When are you guys evaluating those?
Well, we're gonna evaluate them, uh, I'd like to, you know, get this week, you know, this week into next week, so that we come on the first with, you know, here's our, this is what we, this is what we recommend, here's the scorecard, this is the way, how we weighted up, this is how we came to it, you know, uh, because literally, right after that, um, by eight-nine, you know, the, the selective firm has got a, is already, you know, is supposed to start up, you know, and organize their first meeting with, uh, you know, with the players, and, and start, start going, start working on it. So, um, it seems to me like it would, it's a, you know, I, I guess, you know, it's near and dear, I've been working on it for, you know, two years now or something, but it just seems like that's the way to keep it going. I don't know how, how else we can.
You, you, you expect us on a contract with the, the Art in August?
Yeah, or, yeah, give them the, you, you know, no, they would produce probably, they would, I would tell them that, you would tell a firm to get going, and then they would send their, you know, a formal con, they could make the contract, and then we would review it, have line shems review it, and, you know, but in the meanwhile, they could get going, you know, and know that, know that it's happening.
So I think between now and our next meeting, everyone, we need to think about just what Don said, um, and he'll come with a recommendation as far as the firm, and this is what it's gonna cost you. And we need to make that decision, I mean, is this money we want to spend out of the, our, our funds, or not, and.
And you're, you're, you're primed on going to the Art Fund Committee?
Well, I was gonna go, but the Zoom didn't work, yeah.
You're not gonna, you're canceled, so I think you.
Right, but there's, it's in two weeks or something, yeah, but, um, and then when it, when the Zoom didn't work, then I was sitting and thinking about it, and I'm going, well, they're gonna make recommendations to the select board, so I could think I'll just make my own recommendations to the select board, seeing that I'm on the spot. You know, saying that, you know, this would, you know, and, and, you know, it's still a sum of money, but it's, you know, it's, it is a small amount of the pie, you know, I mean, everybody's trying to nibble like that pie, but this is really to, 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 uh, preserve and, and fix our top beautiful town hall, you know, and.
That's something we've talked about for several years, and to your point, I think it's something to be either, you know, fish or company.
Yeah.
I think so.
And this will give us the opportunity to look at, to see really what it, what it's gonna cost us to, to make this usable, or, or just kind of up, you know, keep it so it doesn't fall on the ground.
Right.
You know, there's the two options, basically, we, uh, so let's, you know, let's think about it, I, I think for support here, um, but come in with your, your selling shoes off.
Okay, yeah, no, well, I'll come in with this value, the evaluation that we've done on the two, on the two proposals, yeah.
At this point, I think, as well, there should be, there's something we've done or not, and just move forward on projects. And then, where you get that, this is no, there would be no indication that the rest of the money was coming from our funds to fix the building.
Oh, no, you know, actually, because I don't think we'll need to, we could, there's so many other funding sources, when we get to that point, you know, in twenty-twenty-three or something.
Right.
That, you know.
Right.
I don't think we, you know, I think we just, this would be a good way to get, get going, otherwise, we have to wait another year.
There might be, um, things where you need to match grants, and this might take care of that already, so.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Anything else, Don?
Uh, well, we're, I, we're working on the town, you know, I've got someone looking at the interior with the condensation problem, I don't have an update on that, really, so, uh, that, you know, that same person is gonna replace the two trim boards in the back, and, and, um, I was gonna have someone look at the tree that is banging into the building in the.
Oh, right.
I, I can have some, yeah, that's, that's about it.
The, the garage?
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't taken a look at that.
Yeah, the, the tree man, I don't know, yeah, take a look in the back, I don't think it's, just cutting the one limb, I think it's, it would be better for the, the, for that tree, the way it's leaning and.
Uh-huh, okay.
You know, and, and shading the building and stuff, you know, I, I don't like to take tree out, trees down either, but the way it's sitting up on that bank right there, it's what knocked off the two trim boards, the branch.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, anyway. That's it for me.
John, any other old, old business that you have that you?
Oh, actually, to come to think of it, it's kind of new old business. Way back, when it entered Mortown from Middlesex, um, they had daylilies on the, the little island where, you know, the.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And, just like they killed all the plants across that were planted, even though they, they, the state didn't do what they said they were gonna do, but somebody came along with, with herbicide and, and.
Because it was climbing out.
The vines, yeah, the vines are finally, yeah, finally, the vines are finally taking.
Really, the state?
Yeah, they, they.
Cleaned them right up?
Cleaned them right up.
All that money.
This is when I was on the board back in, yeah, in two thousand.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, uh, at least on the island, I mean, they, there were daylilies planted, and they, they mowed them all down, and now it's just weeds. And so Ruth is a member of the, a river runs through, which is Waterbury Garden Club, but they also do take care of Mortown, and so she wanted to see if perhaps they could pursue planting some things.
It gets aggressive.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll tell Ruth that, I don't know if the, what, what the rest of the garden club will feel about it, because most of them live in, in Waterbury, but.
How do we get the state?
They also, also, by the way, they also wanted to plant something, 'cause Ruth said, can we do something in Mortown? And she thought about the Andrew, Andrew and Mortown sign from, from the north, but the landlord didn't want it.
Really?
No. Because they felt that they would have to maintain it, stuff like that.
Who's in there?
Stephanie.
Oh, I don't know.
Isn't it Stephanie that owns the land there?
I thought so, I don't know.
Um, yeah, I think so.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't her.
It wasn't her, because I think that she would be.
I thought it was a house, I always thought it was a house up.
After the sign on the right there?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Oh, I don't know, I'll ask Stephanie, but I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought she had that land up there.
Yeah.
Because that little field there, where the sign is not field, there's a little opening there.
That's all there is.
I think that's theirs.
Well, that's interesting.
All right, yeah, we'll check in with that.
But on the island, on a hundred B out there, how do we get this, you guys, they fix it all up, how do we get the state not to mow it down?
Well, that's what I, that's what I would, I would get into.
Well, we can talk to the guy that you did with District Five, or where is District Six?
District Six.
Six, you can ask him to. Get acid, but, I mean, you're gonna be hard to do anything. I mean, why do they cut that down?
I remember we were trying to get, replant that whole wall, I never did.
And they, actually, they did plant some service berry trees up, up on the cheater, too. And now that, I mean, they've just been completely shaded out with all the acids. But again, I mean, how do you, you can't expect to send guys up there to cut those.
Brands for sure.
Temporarily, all, all you could do, rebound power does, and just spray the herbicide.
Yeah. Um, all right, so let's, I, Mr. Warren, let's go with the old business. Tonight, we heard that we're not going to be spending a terrible amount of money on the sheriff's patrol, but we have the money that's in that line item that we lose if we don't use it. I think we should consider the movable trailer.
Yeah, I know, Greg, there are the data.
The data, I think Sasha came up with that earlier.
Yeah, and can we use some of the money to move the RSFS, too?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's a big thing, yeah.
So Sasha, I know you had a couple quotes, or a couple things. I don't think the officer's gonna probably remember to get back to you on that. If you could actually send him something, say, look, I've been looking at them, these are the choices that are out there. What do you, what's your opinion? Because I, I didn't understand what specifications they were, long term, so that's what it means to me.
Yeah, I think, it said the Mugi, or the Mugi, something, something that, that the tape, that you, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's the, the Mugi is the, the rate of speed the light blinks, because it has to be a certain, it has to be a certain speed. If it's too fast, then it's.
Or too slow, probably. We'll figure that out, and then see what we can afford, one or two of those, and work with Martin on that, so probably placements.
I'd be interested to see what that tape would cost, that he was talking about, that you can just lay down, and it tracks all the data? Because then you could, you could, I mean, just lay the tape down?
Well, I think that's something that we can maybe check into CDR PC, because I think that's what we said at the.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that would be a good, as far as.
Because then you know where your problems are, so you're not sending him on.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good idea.
You know, scrubbing her out so far when it doesn't make a difference.
Now, this is some new, new old business, John, instead of maybe even communications or announcements, so it's a little bit of everything. And, so I got a call, and I was, I was gonna be online tonight, I'm surprised he's not here, from Stefan, and he has some very exciting news that they received a donation from the Red Hen, Red Hen bakery from their tip jar, well over 10K.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
The fire upon that?
Yeah.
Great, that's so nice.
Yeah, no, it was so good. And so he, you know, discussed perhaps putting maybe half of that, or five grand towards school equipment, and then taking the rest and using it on their type, you know, even, you know, a better French rec, things like that, that they could use for themselves. So I thought that was very, very nice, both ways, them getting it, Stefan reaching out. So I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah, that's amazing, that's great.
Yeah, that's really good, I mean.
I see Randy and Lizer all picture.
Yeah, I was trying, I wanted, I wanted Stefan to tell us, or tell you, but it's gonna get out, and I just don't want everyone to be flat footed and say, what are you talking about? I'm aware, you know, that you know them very well, so that you can thank them.
That's great, wow.
Yeah, so, he, and he said he was, he had no idea about it, he got basically alerted or checking the mail or something like that, that was it.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
He, he was pretty excited about that. Same conversation, he also told me that they need to spend about $1,500 on one of the pieces of equipment to upgrade the air or pump or something, I don't know, like, but, um, so.
Maybe he's got some money from.
So he's got some money anyways. So he was gonna look in to see what we have, I think he's gonna be with Sasha here to see what we have for maintenance money, but still on the budget pair, too.
I wonder how he's doing on the tanker trucks.
He, we did talk about that as well, he's getting prices, if you will. He's, I went out to a couple different manufacturers and just getting a budget, a budget number. So he is working on that. So, yeah, I think that's good with me, with old business, but Ray, do you have?
I do like the dash cam, that they talked to Martin about them, and it sounds like he really wants them, and I think it's a really good idea. He thinks they're gonna be around $150, $200 a piece, I don't, you know, probably get some quotes.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's a good idea to have dash cams on, on the trucks, and probably on the excavator.
Yep, excavator and the, what was that big thing with the grader? The big thing with the, big yellow flag?
I, you know, I did encourage Martin to pursue that, I think it's something that we should do. I'd also ask Martin to get Rodney to make a written report of what happened with him, just so we have it on file, that this shows up five years from now, you know, where we're all not around, it'd be a good idea to have some, some record.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Ray.
So Sasha, I think you're a bit forward on that.
Forward, five. And Sasha's also, I think, worked with Martin on the camera, I think you've done some research.
Sure, I want to, for some grant money out of that.
Oh, is it, really? Good, so, perfect. So if you guys can pursue that and figure out what we need there. And?
I haven't heard back from Clark as far as anything on the village wastewater system. I don't think they met with the community of yours. I have not heard their recommendation or anything like that.
Clark's sick right now.
He's sick?
He's what?
Sick.
Oh.
COVID sick.
Oh, you got COVID now? I just saw him the other day on the door.
Everybody held out, they're all, they're all giving it now, after this past week.
Yeah, it's amazing, yeah, yeah. So sooner or later, yeah.
And someone's in here earlier today, they were standing there, so, anyways.
Um, all right. Okay?
That's where any of you. That's it. Sasha, do you have anything to old business, like, no? That'll work, you got anything for us? All right, very good. Sure, well, we have a few things to sign here, folks, and then you guys can check out here. We're gonna pass this bit, what did you write?
I'm very pleased with the conversation with the chef.
Kelly? Yeah, I thought, felt good, it was good.
Stan is great, I worked with him when I was at Castleton, because for one of my criminal justice classes, I needed like an extra five or six hours of law enforcement ride along time. So I took like two days during vacation and rode along with Peter when he patrolled out here, so.
He's been really good.
And he was great.
It sounds like.
I will say, riding along with State River was a lot more fun, but.
I got it, I had.
Two spares here, well.
Oh, that's, I don't know if anyone else wants to look at this, but I was looking at what was left for PGL or town hall. Does anyone else want to look at that? PGL, oh, it's curious.
Yeah, we don't have to sign this.
From the, I need a sticker on all of them.
Where I believe the sticker is.
Sign here, it's just because of the $100 or somebody's.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
But where?
No, it's, it's all right.
How do I, it's stapled, isn't it?
You know, Tom, Ray, I usually sign this.
If, if it hasn't been signed up?
Everybody's just.
This is, yeah, there.
So Ray, at some point, you'll need to.
Yes.
What is the, talk to Martin about?
Is this a, is it a real road?
Yes.
Down the rate, or something? Should we get his thoughts on that?
Yeah.
I mean, I know.
Yeah, I think, I, they're actually. Because they're gonna put a lot of course.
I keep this on.
They're building it, they should have made the, the builder.
I keep it.
Well, that's what, and it's our.
Yes, in my.
They're home, just wait and tell them, wait till you're done, wait till you're done.
We're out of here, you're, we're out there, but.
Yeah, I think that was an issue, or I know that's an issue, but. All right, everyone, we thank you very much. And we'll see everyone in August. So I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, right?
All right.
All right, well.